Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here, sorry.
And President Blinsky.
Here. So we're all here. I'm going to put everybody on. Sorry about that. I didn't think when I hit mute all, I got them. How's the echo? Would everybody go on? Please. That sounds better. We have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software. I now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to members of the public who are joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Blinsky. Okay, so everybody should have joined the meeting tonight muted. And when President Blinsky calls for public comment, those joining us with the Teams client, you can toggle your mute status by clicking on the little microphone icon in the meeting toolbar. And only attendees can unmute themselves. So when you get muted, nobody can unmute someone else. You have to unmute yourself in order to provide your commentary. And if you're joining us by audio conference dial-in, you can toggle your mute status by pressing star six. And just a reminder that public comment, in case of technical difficulties, you can always go over to the YouTube livestream that'll be discussed here shortly and provide your comments over there, and I'll read them back into the meeting here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. For those of you watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state amended the Opens Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the village board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. Now, as usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel number six and also on the internet on YouTube. And I'll read the URL for those of you who may want to switch over to YouTube. And there's no spaces or dashes or anything. So www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. A recording of the meeting will be archived on the village's YouTube website as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. Now, as Mr. Skiles alluded to, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have participated in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. And so if you send an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the beginning of the meeting, your email has been provided to the board members and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be included. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature, and then a member of the village staff will read your comments to the village board. And for those of you who have connected to the meeting live via the Microsoft Teams software or via the phone, at the appropriate time, I will ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being in person together, I'll first ask people just to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board, and I will assemble a list, and then I'll call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the village board, just as they would be allotted during an in-person meeting. And all comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we always do. So I am about to mute everyone once again, and hopefully I'm not going to mute myself. Hang on. I'm hitting the wrong button. That's the problem. Mute all. That's the button I should be hitting. Okay, so you can still hear me, but everybody else should be muted. That'll keep down the echoes. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 264 pages. So moving on, the next item on our agenda is public comment. That's item two. And again, at an in-person meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. But because it's, this meeting is being conducted remotely, public comments which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting have been provided to the board members. They are part of the public record, but they will not be read during the meeting. I will now ask people who are on YouTube Live to submit comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And while they are typing, I will ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board, I'll ask them to please identify themselves now. And since I muted everyone, you have to unmute yourself to speak. So are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Okay, again, unmute yourself if you would like to address the board. All right, so hearing none, I will ask the village staff if we received any comments from people via the YouTube Live chat box.
This is Peter Skiles, and I don't see any comments at this time, President Blinsky. And I would just add that regarding the echo, if anybody has joined the meeting on a second device, just make sure you have that second device volume turned down because that could be one of the sources of the echo.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. All right, so no public comment. We will move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. And tonight, all items, as always, beginning with the number three, are on the consent agenda. So tonight, that consists of items 3.1 through items 3.18. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So let me begin by asking if there's any member of the audience, anybody who's dialed in who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, people who are watching on YouTube Live should type that in now. Mr. Skiles, were there any emails received in advance of the meeting that requested an item to be removed from the consent agenda?
I will double-check real quick. I don't recall seeing any.
I don't believe there were either, but just let's confirm that. And then I will also ask people who have connected to the meeting live via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, are there any items that any of you would like to remove from the consent agenda? Remember, unmute yourself and let us know.
And no items through public comment, President Blinsky?
Through the email address.
Correct.
And are there any comments from YouTube Live?
One more check. No, no comments.
Okay. And hearing no comments from anybody who's dialed in here, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
That was trustee Sullivan?
Echo and the echo.
Yeah. So maybe one of the echo offenders at the end. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe that was trustee Dodd. All right, so it's been moved to the second. Please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Blinsky.
Aye, so the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. I'm muting all again. Sorry. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved. And I'll clarify for people who have logged in or dialed in. Again, all the items beginning with the three have been approved, and that includes land use committee items 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6. So if you were here for one of those items, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or of any of the other items on the consent agenda. So you're free to log off or hang up. Of course, you are more than welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting as well. So moving on to report of officers, item four. First item is item 4.1, introduction of Didier Glattard, who is recommended for appointment to the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Glattard, I believe you have dialed in. So if you would unmute yourself and just take a moment to introduce yourself to the board, give us, you know, 60 seconds on your background and the like.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. First, I want to apologize. I am in Atlanta visiting my mother right now, so I'm doing this from my iPhone, and you know, it's a little difficult, but we're getting it done.
We can see you. We appreciate you logging in from Atlanta.
Okay. I want to thank the village for recommending me for this position. I'm very excited about the possibility of being on the zoning board and look forward to your response. Lived in Willmet since 1992, raised my family here, built a, bought a house, completely rehabbed it, doubled the size of it, and we've been living here since. Give you a little of my history. I started out as an architect, graduated from the University of Illinois with a master's of architecture, worked for architects, Skidmore, Oins &amp; Merrill, Lucian &amp; La Grange and Associates, big firms, and worked on big projects. The economy went south, and I found a job at Walgreens Corporation, who was still hiring. So I became an architect for them and quickly moved myself into the real estate department where I was a real estate manager, managing several territories around the United States, and moved from territory to territory and got to see a lot of towns. It was great. Then I left Walgreens to become a real estate developer and joined two other people and created a company. We were developing Walgreens stores. It was very interesting, learned a lot, planning boards, zoning boards, the difficulties for commercial retailers on such occasions. Did that for four years or five, and then 2008 came and the markets crashed. So I was, had to stop working on those because they all became, you know, undoable. Luckily, I kept my relationships with Walgreens and was hired back there as a real estate vice president, where I continued and managed, you know, a group of people in several different markets on the east coast where real estate is probably the most difficult. I had a great reputation there, which is why they put me there because I can make something happen. In 2017, Walgreens was downsizing, and they eliminated the real estate vice president role. So I was laid off and basically had nothing to do for a little while. You'll find this interesting, but I loved working on houses and fixing things. So I decided, my wife suggested, oh, you should start a handyman business. You'd be great at that. So I put my name on Nextdoor McKenzie as a handyman and actually got extremely busy. After I did the first job, somebody's oven was broken and went in there, and a half an hour later was able to fix their door. They were so happy, they put a huge text on Nextdoor McKenzie about me and had my mobile phone number on there. So I started getting all kinds of calls and became very proficient at it. With COVID-19 now, I've stopped doing the handyman work. I've changed my name to Didier Glattard Neighborhood Repairman instead of Handyman and asked people, they have something to repair? Bring it to my house and I'll repair it for you. So if any of you need something repaired, you could always bring it to my home. I'm excited about this zoning opportunity. I've always enjoyed being on the other side of the zoning board, trying to get our deals approved and dealing with the whole system of it. So I hope I get approved because I'm looking forward to doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Glattard. I actually, in reviewing your background, I was very excited about the, you know, your 20-plus years of, you know, sort of neighborhood retail development because obviously that's the kind of retail development that we have here in town and clearly a void on the zoning board today. It's nice that you're an architect as well. That's always a great background to have on any of our real estate boards and commissions, but your retail development is truly unique, and so I appreciate you raising your hand. Any of the trustees have any questions for Mr. Glattard? I'm pronouncing that right, aren't I?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
I have a question. Is your wife Catherine?
Yes, she is.
I play tennis with her, so I knew you'd be. So welcome to have you.
I'll have to let her know.
All right. Great. Well, sir, thank you for dialing in from Atlanta. That was very nice of you. And the process is such that you were introduced and recommended tonight at the next board meeting. Your approval will be on, and in the event that you are approved, you will be a member of the zoning board of appeals. So thank you again for volunteering.
Terrific. Thank you all too.
All right, so moving on, the next report is from our village manager, Mr. Berman.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I do have a handful of items. The first is just to let the community know that the village did conduct a referendum last week, an advisory referendum regarding the retail sale of cannabis. The preliminary unofficial results have 56% voters in favor of the retail sale and 44% opposed. This does not change the current law in Willmet. We have a moratorium in place prohibiting the retail sale of cannabis, and that extends through summer of '21. We anticipate the village board will take up this matter in early 2021, and we'll use our e-news and social media to communicate with our residents when those items will be on the agenda for further discussion and consideration. Second item is very good news regarding our neighborhood storage improvement project. Last night, Bridgette led our team of consultants in a meeting with the park board and received final approval of our construction plans for Hibbert Park, which was the next big hurdle that we needed to jump over to proceed with phase two of the project early next year. So congratulations to Bridgette and her team, and we'll keep moving that project forward for the board and the community. And this weekend, in partnership with Go Green Willmet, we hosted a pumpkin pitch in the village hall parking lot. 1,240 pumpkins were deposited for composting, which is a pretty astounding number. So we want to thank Go Green Willmet for their partnership and our residents who participated. And finally, given that it looks like the storm has passed, and I know we have an agenda item off consent for discussion, I think we could probably all drop our second devices now and hopefully eliminate the echo or feedback we're hearing, and we'll cross our fingers that we don't lose power for the rest of the evening. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. We'll move on to Mr. Steiner, Corporation Counsel, his report.
I have no report, Mr. President.
One other thing I might add, tomorrow is Willmet's Veterans Day ceremony at 11:00. It's always the 11th hour of the 11th month, and that is tomorrow, and that is at Veterans Park, which is on Central. I hadn't even thought about the construction, but I'm sure it'll be fine. Next up is the report of our Liquor Control Commissioner. That's item five. There's no report tonight. We'll move on to our Standing Committee reports.
President Blinsky, if I could jump in real quick.
Yes.
It looks like we did receive one public comment on the YouTube chat right after you closed public comment.
Okay.
And we do want to make sure that we can share that with the board and community. So I can go ahead and read it right now. I've got it in.
That would be great. That is fine.
All right. It's from, I don't have a full name. It's V. Economu. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, but the comment is, I've been following the proceedings with the park board. I would remind the members of the board that as the taxing body, there is a duty to monitor how IGA money is being wisely spent.
Okay. Thank you. I presume that's in reference to the various stormwater projects that we have underway. All right, so I'm sorry, back to item six, which is the Standing Committee reports. First up, as always, is 6-1, which is the land use standing committee report, and trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Blinsky. All items are on the consent agenda.
All right. Second up, item 6-2, the Finance Committee Report, trustee Kennedy.
All items are on consent tonight.
6-3 is the Administration Standing Committee Report, trustee Dodd.
Yes, we have one item. It's item 6.31, which is discussion on the Business Assistant Grant Program. I assume that I'm turning that over to Mr. Berman or Mr. Hallgren.
Yeah, Eric's going to take that one, so he'll pull up the presentation and walk us through it.
Thank you, Mr. Hallgren.
All right, give me one moment, and I'll get the presentation started. All right, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
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 All right. So first, I want to start off with just the history of the Business Assistance Grants that we had put in place previously. There are two previous programs that were approved to combat the economic impact of COVID-19. Both of these programs were put in place to provide short-term relief to our businesses that were impacted by the stay-at-home order and other business restrictions during the early part of the year. The first program was a sales tax Business Assistance Program. This was approved in late March, and this provided half a percent of sales tax back to those businesses that were eligible. The second program was the Service Business Assistance Program, which provided a share of a business's annual revenues back to them, and this program was approved in mid-April. So between the two programs, between the sales tax and the service grant, there was a total of $531,000 that was allocated towards these two programs. This was based upon estimates of business revenues as well as sales tax. For the sales tax grant program, we dispersed just over $218,000 in grants, and for the service business grant, we distributed just under $58,000. So all in all, it was around $276,000. At this point in time, currently, out of those two programs, there's around $254,000 remaining of the original grant allocations that can be utilized for additional Business Assistant Grant programs. So just to give you a little more information on the program, our last disbursement was in the month of July. But other items that have happened on a statewide basis, the Restore Illinois Plan was put in place at the early part of May. At this point in time, Willmet, which is in Region 10 of the plan, combined with all of the other regions throughout the state, were moved into Phase Four, which was the kind of the standing restrictions that were in place from May through the last several months. In July, the state amended that Restore Illinois Plan to include mitigation programs in case different businesses met, or not businesses, if different regions met different threshold criteria for increases in hospitalization, increases in the rolling number of case positivity. These mitigations were adopted mid-July, and recently, on October 28th, Region 10, which includes Willmet, had new restrictions that were put in place. As I said, these were put in place due to sustained increases in our positivity rates and hospital admissions in the region. So the specific mitigations that were put in place were really, were primarily directed at the restaurant sector. They included no indoor dining or bar service. Outdoor dining was only permitted until 11:00. There were limitations on the spacing of the tables that had to be six feet apart. And excluding, aside from those specific restaurant, in-person gatherings were limited to 25 individuals. That was down from 100. And then indoor gatherings were also limited to 25% of the room capacity. But the reason and the rationale behind the Restaurant Business Assistance Grant is that the restrictions that were put in place as part of this mitigation plan really had the most direct impact on the village's restaurant sector. There weren't significant limitations put in place on the other business sectors throughout the community. So we developed three different options that were available for the Restaurant Assistance Program. The first thing I do want to note here is that our recommendation is that the grant program would only be triggered if these mitigation requirements extended beyond four weeks. So the mitigations were put in place October 28th. That would bring us through November 25th before we would open up this assistance program for applications. So the first option is to replicate the original sales tax rebate program. This would again rebate a half a percent to eligible restaurants. We estimate this value at just around $170,000 based upon previous businesses' submissions as well as some new restaurants that have opened in the last several months. Option two, if we wanted to increase the amount, we could increase the original sales tax rebate by a quarter of a percent for restaurants only. This would bring the value up to around $250,000. And then the last option, which should have been labeled option three here, would distribute funds equally amongst the restaurants. We estimate somewhere between 30 to 40 different restaurants that would be eligible. The estimated value of this program is around $254,000. Ultimately, our staff's recommendation is to go with option one. The reason behind this is that it will allow us to maintain flexibility if there's future restrictions. So if we move into the third set of mitigations that would start to impact our retail sector, we would have the ability to provide potential relief to other sales tax generating businesses throughout the community. And then the last part here is going through, and just wanted to give you a program, looking at the different programs, rules that would apply. So the first several items are rules that were put in place previously. They must have a Willmet license. They must not have permanently ceased operation. They must generate sales tax between $500,000 and $75,000. It excludes chains, franchises, private clubs. And then we would also ask them to certify that they've suffered a minimum 15% decrease from the time of the additional mitigations comparatively to last year. Two new rules that we have added here, because it is specific to restaurants as well as the indoor dining component, is that we'd ask them to certify that 50% of their primary sales are from restaurant or bar service, and that they must also provide indoor dining service. So with that, happy to answer any questions about the program.
Yeah, I'm going to, let me, I'm going to make a quick comment, and then I'll open up the floor to questions for the staff. Look, I feel like we're in a very similar position to where we were in March and April. The numbers are up, the restrictions are going up, and Washington is still getting its act together. Look, if these numbers continue, I don't know if it's more PPP loans, if it's some other form of aid, but it seems likely that something will come out of Washington, but we don't know when. And, you know, these small amounts aren't going to save any businesses, but again, may extend the runway here a little bit further so that the other programs, which are bigger in size and magnitude, can come in. So again, if you look at the Illinois numbers, actually, it's sort of a scary graph because we are well beyond where we were when the world was shutting down in March and April in terms of new cases. So The New York Times has a great charts, you know, they're COVID-covered. You can check out all those charts, as does the Illinois Department of Public Health's website. So questions from the trustees for the staff? What I, my plan is to have you guys ask questions, and then I will, since this is an item that's not on consent, I will open the floor for public comment in case there is any, and then I'll come back to the trustees and ask them to sort of, let's see if we have a consensus for direction for staff. Again, these funds were already brought by us, but I think our method of operation, staff has kept this formed of what the plans are in this area.
So I have a question. This is trustee Kersman. When I saw the option three, and it mentioned, I believe, 37 restaurants, and then our materials that trustee Dodd... that Trustee Dodd requested had 27 restaurants, I'm just wondering if there's just some pieces I'm not understanding in terms of what is the extent of our, of our restaurant community?
So there were 27 original businesses that received grants in the first round.
First round, okay.
Yeah, so there were, there have been several restaurants, and such as Carlos and Carlos or Sophia Steak, that we know have come into the community since that first round. We also identified several restaurants that were potentially eligible during the last round that did not apply. So we did want to include them as potential applicants during this, this round. So we did provide, just understanding that there, there is that potential for additional businesses to apply that maybe didn't apply back in May.
Trustee Kersman, now you need, you were, you were nice enough to mute yourself, and now you need to unmute yourself to talk again.
So it seems like, thank you, President Blinsky. It seemed like there's five restaurants not, not accounted for, or am I just misunderstanding the, the numbers?
There, there are five that are not listed. We don't have specifics on those. There is a potential that there was somebody we missed during the review of our restaurants. There are also Sophia and Carlos and Carlos. We don't have a full understanding of what that value might be for them. So we provided, I guess, a little bit of a buffer in there for the, the total grant value.
So if I understand it correctly, there are restaurants that are in the village that are not on this list because they didn't submit the first go-around, and they're not new ones either, that, just to list everyone, you wanted to include them in that 37. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment, yes.
Okay. Trustee Kersman, that answer your question? I think that was, I believe so.
You keep shutting me up.
No, I, no, I'm not hitting anything.
I, I, I'm not muting myself, far be it for me to pull my own cord here, but yeah, that does answer my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kersman. Other questions for the staff and the trustees?
I have a couple of questions.
Trustee Plunkett?
Yes, so this might be related a little bit to Trustee Kersman's question, but the 169, 249,000, I think that we're discussing now, how much did we spend on restaurants alone in our last go-around? And I'm just, I'm just wondering, I mean, we obviously, there was a lot of money that we earmarked that wasn't spent, and I'm just wondering if that was restaurants, if it was other sales, you know, where we were on that?
We distributed just over $140,000 during the first round to those 27 restaurants. So the major, like, there was clearly another sizable portion that was related to non-restaurants that weren't, that did not apply as part of that sales tax grant program, the initial.
Okay, is that, I guess we, we don't really have an idea of, of who would take advantage of it, but I know we have some new restaurants, but some restaurants closed. Does that sound like a fair number, or do we think that we would get closer to the full amount this time if we, if we went with that Option 1?
I think that we would be, we would be between that 140 and that $170,000 figures, just based upon the, the several new restaurants that have opened up. We know of the one closure for Nix, but we feel that it would, we'd be fairly close in that estimate.
Okay, and then another question I have, just in terms of how we were, you know, calculating the 15% loss and the timeframe there. I know initially, this is, you know, after a month. What if a restaurant, you know, did so well, you know, in the late fall because of the weather and maybe not hit the 15% mark after that first month, but by the end of December has had difficulty? Are we, what, what's the rule there in terms of, you know, when a restaurant could apply for this?
I mean, our, our intent here would be, is that they would have that during the time of application. So if they were, if they were to apply at a later point of time and had that 15% decrease in their, in sales comparatively to last year, they would be eligible. So just as an example, I know this question has come up about what that timeframe is. We did not shut down the application process as soon as we moved into the different region or into the different phases. We still did extend that application period for businesses that did apply, that, that met that 15% threshold in sales decline after the moving into different phases.
So I think what you're saying, Mr. Hallgren, is that, let's say, and Trustee Plunkett, I think your question, let's say a restaurant had a good November. To your point, there's been some good weather here, and maybe outdoor dining did really well, but they got hammered in December. Would they be eligible to apply in December after they've been hammered in December if they hadn't applied in November? And I think the answer that Mr. Hallgren gave was yes. I'm sort of rephrasing your question, Senta, and rephrasing Eric's answer. I think that, I think that's what I just.
Yes, we would look to, we would look to extend the support. So I think, yes, the very simple answer is, yes, we would look to, we would provide that assistance.
And can you refresh my memory? Sorry to take up so many, so much time.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
Do we have any protections, or what was built in? Obviously, the business has to be, you know, in existence, but, you know, things are tenuous now. If we give a grant and the business closes a month later, is that just something that we are out of, or what's our timeframe there?
We had limitations on what they could expend the money for, right? The money had to be expended for certain things.
Correct, so they had to use it for payment to suppliers, payroll purposes, they could not use them for rent purposes. Those were the, kind of the key parameters that we had on the stipulations. But as far as kind of the timing, if they were to go out of business immediately after receiving the grant, I, I think we had a clawback provision, but I don't think we instituted, we didn't have to institute that as part of our, any previous grant dispersments.
Yeah, I think there was, wasn't there also a stipulation that if you were closed, and remember, back then, some of these guys were actually closed, there was a stipulation that you were not permanently closed, and then you planned to reopen? That's my.
That is correct, yeah. So if they were closed for a three-week period during May, but they had the desire, or they opened back up in June, we would still, we extended the grant to them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Trustee Dodd, you're leaning into the microphone.
I have questions to follow up, yeah, yeah. Just to follow up. Maybe it is. It is.
Do you have your other phone on still?
And what? I don't have it.
You didn't do a second device? Let me, let me mute the crowd, and you unmute, see if that's all. All right, so try and unmute yourself now.
Is that better?
That is better.
Okay, I actually turned my phone off. I don't know, maybe I needed to do that. Okay, so I had one follow-up question, I have a couple of questions, following up to Trustee Plunkett's question. So do we have any parameters around, you know, when this program would end? So as Trustee Plunkett was talking about, if a restaurant was doing okay in November, but then they decided to apply in December, you know, is there any, is there any, when would this end? And maybe following up on that, would it end once we move, you know, once we allow restaurants to go back to indoor dining? Does this, is that when this, a restaurant would no longer apply?
Yes, I think that would be a fair timeframe. If we were, if the mitigation, mitigations were removed, I think that there is that potential for us to, to cut off the grant application period.
Yeah, I think what we did on the last one, didn't we, didn't you basically come to us and say, hey, we're going to close it down now, and the board sort of nodded in agreement?
Yes, we, we, as we went through, because we were approving the different grant, and we will continue to approve all of the individual grant expenditures at each meeting. As we go through and have that conversation each board meeting, we can cut off the expenditure at any point in time.
Okay, but generally speaking, it's our intent to, to do this up until the time that we, that the governor releases the restriction on indoor dining.
That is correct.
Okay, and then can you clarify for me, you know, when we talk about must provide indoor dining service, so just looking, you know, obviously, it's our goal to make sure that this program is helping those restaurants that are impacted by the fact that they can't have any indoor dining. And so if you, if, if there are any restaurants out there that don't have indoor dining, it's all pickup, or, you know, or they have one table to have people sit there while they're waiting to pick up or whatever. So I just want to understand what we mean by must provide indoor dining service, and could we, could we modify it to ensure that it's possibly, you know, you must have indoor seating for three tables?
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what, that's the intention, exactly what you're talking about, I think, right? So Domino's, while Domino's and Lou's would be excluded for other reasons because they're chains, clearly, though, pizza pickup guys don't need money to survive right now. They're doing just, just fine.
But so what it, so what is, you know, so could we restrict it then that maybe you have to have a liquor license, or so what is, I'm just asking, what are, who would qualify then? Do you have to have, if you have one table of indoor dining, do you qualify for that?
Well, let's look at the list of people that were on it before. Pescadero.
I think the other thing, I think one of the other considerations here is though, if they were primarily a pickup business last year, and they continue to be a pickup business this year, that they would potentially not meet the 15% decline in revenue. So if, if their business model hasn't significantly changed year over year, there shouldn't be a significant decrease in, in their revenue year over year.
But there are, I mean, I don't want us to be specific to a restaurant, but there are a handful of restaurants on here, I believe, that actually are mostly, that we, that are mostly pickup.
The sushi business is.
Yes, that's an example.
So Trustee Dodd, I, I think you make a good point, and, you know, we could look at something similar to what we're doing with, you know, 50% of your sales having to be restaurant food-related, that, you know, a percentage of your sales need to be related to indoor dining, right? The intent isn't to aid a business whose primary component is carry out with ancillary indoor dining service. I don't, we don't have.
That's going to be tough. Mike, that's going to be tough for a business to, so they may not be keeping, small businesses like this may not keep records like this was takeout, you know, if you're McDonald's, you've got that kind of.
Okay, that's fair, maybe, maybe the answer is.
A number of tables.
Could we do that they have a liquor license?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Not everybody has a liquor license.
Okay, so that's, so could we do that they have to have a certain number of, I don't know, I just, again, it's just more, our goal, I think, is to make sure we help the restaurants that are impacted by the limits around indoor dining, and so I think we just want to focus on that.
Right, and so, for example, Irving's indoor dining has been closed, right? I've gone there, and their indoor dining is closed, so they don't have indoor dining right now, so presumably, this isn't, the shutdown on indoor dining shouldn't impact Irving's anymore.
Correct.
Not thinking on them, but that's just reality. I've, I've gone there.
Exactly, there's a couple others in here that, like, you only pick up from outside, you know what I mean? So that's why I'm just trying to, and maybe that's just a logistical thing that you guys can work through, so not to get us, you know, buried into the weeds here, but I, I think most importantly, it's just acknowledging that just, to clarify what must provide indoor dining service means and.
Yeah, that's a good point, and let's let the staff figure that out for us, and, and it'll probably be one of those that it's sort of obvious when you see it, but hard to define, but obvious when you see it, kind of things.
I, let me ask a question, because I think this will be important direction for us as we implement a program, is there, there are restaurants with indoor dining service, to your point, President Blinsky, that have not allowed that to happen during the summer, even though it was permitted. Would we be intending to provide grants to those businesses? Because their business model has not changed since the mitigation orders were put in effect, but they're still obviously impacted by the pandemic. So I think that direction would be helpful from the board before we would implement a program.
And look, I think that's a good question. You know, to my point, there's a difference between AO Sushi, or I guess, they, they actually don't call it that, I, that, that's what I call it, where they actually don't have chairs, there is no table service, versus Irving's, where there historically has been indoor dining, but they've chosen not to have indoor dining during the pandemic and primarily be a takeaway and outdoor dining business.
And I think, I mean, you go to a restaurant like Depot, you've got something else that made a choice, you know, for safety or their employees not to have indoor dining. I think they should still, you know, be allowed to be in this pool. I mean, if it was not for this pandemic, they would have indoor dining, and they certainly intend to have indoor dining in the future. And I think for restaurants like that, it's probably obvious to tell who does have indoor dining as a part of their model, and whether or not for safety they decided to suspend it. You know, that was up to them, but, I mean, if you've got, if you can show the business loss compared to last year, you know, and they don't have that option anymore, I think they should be included. I mean, Irving's is a chain, and they probably have chain rules, but.
It's a pretty small chain nowadays. I'm not sure. They're not anymore.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, there may be just a couple of them left.
Didn't know that. Okay, well, those are my two cents on that.
Yeah, this is Trustee Kennedy. I would agree with what Trustee Plunkett said. If people, we should, people, we shouldn't be penalizing restaurants who prefer to be cautious about having indoor dining, if in fact, that's their normal state of being. And, and if we, and if we start penalizing people for that, I think.
I agree, I think that's a great point. I think that's a great point, Trustee Kennedy. You don't want to penalize someone here for, for being a good citizen, in essence.
Correct.
Yeah.
This might be a good time to remind people in the community that whether we go into a lower tier, it's going to depend on our behavior, and, and all of us need to be conscious about, and encourage our friends, neighbors to be conscious about their own social activities.
Yeah, no, Trustee Kennedy, it's a great point. I, I've been on some phone calls with Mayor Lightfoot from Chicago with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, you know, the, basically, her and suburban mayors, and what their health department has found, that in approximately two-thirds of the cases where they've done contact tracing, people know exactly where they got it. I have a family member that I was visiting with, and they had it, or I was at a small gathering, and so you're not seeing, it's not soccer matches and football games where people are getting sick. It's, we had eight neighbors over, and we didn't social distance, and we were inside, and we didn't wear masks, and a week later, we found out that, you know, one of the individuals was sick, and now six of us are sick. So it really is coming down to sort of maintaining your vigilance on trying to stay outside and wearing a mask inside, and, you know, it, it's uncomfortable when you're inside with friends to do that, but it is, it is the right thing to do, for sure.
Yeah, and it, it doesn't just affect the people that go to the social gathering, it affects the entire community. And in the spirit of supporting our community, I think we should all be very cognizant of our behavior in that regard.
I agree, I agree. Other thoughts on, on indoor dining sort of definition from trustees?
Well, I actually agree with Trustee Kennedy. I think, you know, let's not penalize those that are, you know, overly cautious, and I, I think would be supportive as flexible as possible. I know Irving's seems to be the example, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think you said it best, President Blinsky, this is, this is going to be a little bit of a lifeline, but it's not going to be the lifesaver. You know, they're, they're going to need a lot more, and I think this is a good way to support it, and I would support staff as flexible and use it in their discretion, so.
I would add, I would add just maybe one, one comment or question, perhaps for Mr. Hallgren, and it relates to the restaurants that were added to the list for which we don't have numbers. One of them, for example, Sophia, I expect would be one of the larger numbers, perhaps the largest in the village. Is there any way that we can address this at a time when we have a better handle on what this is really likely to involve financially? Because I have some concern, not, not with the concept. Because I have some concern, not, not with the concept, but with the approval of a program where there are a number of restaurants, including at least two significant ones, for which we don't have numbers.
I mean, we will look to see if we have any updated sales tax information from them during their first month of operation, to see if we can get a sense what we did for two of the other restaurants that are on the list, Pescadero, and I can't recall the other. We extrapolated out based upon a certain period of time, so we took six months of sales and took it out over a full year to try to determine their value. We would utilize that same methodology with Sophia or Carlos and Carlos based upon their sales. However, we do expect that those sales figures for both of those restaurants will be slightly diluted because they were never operating at a full capacity. So to the point that this, to trustee Sullivan's point, that this is providing them somewhat of a, a small amount, a small value lifeline, it certainly won't be the piece that keeps them going in perpetuity.
That, that's certainly true, it's certainly not the piece that keeps them going, but the estimated values in the presentation, if I understand that right, don't include those.
We estimated around $2,900 of sales, just to pace upon the average of everybody that we distributed grants for. We understand that if we look at that list of potential businesses, some are going to be above, some are going to be significantly below that value, but we think that that, that roughly $3,000 for each one of them should be able to cover us. Also, we do have a little bit of space based upon next closure that we'd be able to make up any potential differences in that space. So we, we think that we're setting the threshold high enough that we won't run out of funds before the end of the program.
Yeah, and trustee Barrow, in no event would they go above the amount, you know, the 531 that we previously approved.
Good.
Is, can I have a follow-up question? Is that, is it, they won't go above the 531 or they won't go above the 170 that we're approving? Just so I understand, are we approving to spend 170 or to, or 270?
I, I mean, I don't know, we're not voting on anything because we've already approved it. I thought that the, this was the staff sort of running us through another methodology, another use for the funds that we've already approved, you know, because that's just the way we've been collaborating on this. But we've already approved the expenditure of this money. We did that back in the spring.
Make an approval to stop the program, so actually to start them up again, we'd have to approve it?
We didn't really, we sort of just agreed to hold it in, I mean, what the board said, the staff said, we don't think we should extend this any further, we should hold it in the future for, for actually what's happening right now.
Okay, okay.
And I think trustee Dodd and to trustee Barrow, your concerns, you know, if we are getting data from some of these new businesses that would cause us to go well over our projections, we'll, we'll revisit this with the board and make sure we're comfortable with where we're at before we finalize it. And those rules for the new restaurants, you know, are going to be something we work through as we get more information from them. We just, we need to, we need to build that database and figure it out and then implement. But to Eric's point, neither one of them were ever operating at full capacity because they opened in the middle of the pandemic. So their, their sales data is going to be lower than we would assume, even though, you know, they appear to be very strong, successful restaurants.
Okay, I have one more question, actually.
If I may, really quick, I'm sorry trustee Dodd, the resolution that we are approving, that was approved on the consent agenda, does allow for an expenditure up to $254,000 essentially, which is the balance of the 500 plus dollars, which was original, which was the original.
So we did have to vote on something, or this was just incorporated in the emergency?
It's just.
The money's been, the money's been approved, but this is sort of belt and suspenders on it?
Yeah, exactly, this is just the next level authorizing us to create new rules for this particular amount of money. So we could have done it otherwise, we could have done it otherwise in the original grant of authority from you, but we figured, make it very clear in the resolution, because there's going to be a new series of administrative rules as well, as we talked about, there's some changes to them.
Okay, thank you for correcting.
We are going to, we will work within the guidelines by the board, right? We're not, we are, we have no intent to spend up to that 531 as part of this program. You know, we'll, we'll knock out these restaurants if this is the direction we get, and then any additional grants, you know, we come back to the board for further discussion.
And again, you guys are going to come back to us sort of post, post the disbursements for sort of retroactive reporting and approval, just like you've done earlier in the year, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments with staff?
I have an, I have another question. So I have actually two others. So what, if a restaurant, for whatever reason, is not complying with the governor's order and other, do they still qualify? Would they still qualify? If we learn that a restaurant is not, you know?
If, you mean if they're providing indoor service?
Yes.
Do we, you know, Mr. Berman, Mr. Stein, are we aware of anybody who's doing that right now?
There's been no complaints or any violations or any citations issued whatsoever from Cook County Department of Public Health or the State Department of Public Health on these matters. My office has not received any complaints, but to answer trustee Dodd's question, we will, we would like to build into the administrative rules that you must be in compliance with state, with state and local laws, because otherwise.
Yeah.
Be a little bit of a waste.
Right, I agree. It's a good question, trustee Dodd. You have one more?
Well, and then my other question was just if, I'll save that to when you go around with comments, so that's, that's it.
Well, I'm about to go around with comments, so you may as well.
Well, I thought you were going to wanted to open up public.
Oh yeah, I was going to go to public comment, and then I was just going to sort of look for people to nod their head and say, yeah, this is, we should move forward with this. So, okay, I'll do that and then I'll come back. Any other, before I do that, though, before I go to public comment, any other questions for the board or for the staff, I mean, sorry, from the board? All right, so again, just because this was off of consent, and we discussed that if there was someone who would, was interested in making a comment, they may be sitting waiting, so I don't believe there were any public comments submitted in advance on this item by email, but would the staff confirm that for me, please?
That's correct, no public comments.
Okay, so if you're watching on YouTube Live, you can submit comments for the village staff to read, the chat window is to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And now also ask if there are any individuals who are connected to the meeting live via Microsoft Teams or the telephone. If you would like to address the board, please identify yourself now and I will assemble a list and then call on individuals to address the board. So you have to unmute yourself first before you do that. So is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, hearing none, I will go back to Mr. Skiles. Were there any comments that were received from the YouTube Live chat box?
No comments, President Polinsky.
Okay, so I guess I'll open the floor, trustee Dodd said she wanted to say something, but otherwise we'll just look for people to sort of nod along, but go ahead, trustee Dodd.
Yeah, okay, so obviously, I think anything we can do for restaurants to help them get passed through this issue, I think is important, and I'm sure the restaurants, I hope they're very appreciative of what we've done before. You know, my only concern, if I understand this, is that if we, if we shouldn't wait a week till our next board meeting or a month to implement this, and the only reason why is if I understand this correctly, if the governor does change, you know, obviously we think we're not going in a good direction, but if things do start to get better, and let's just say that the governor releases some of the restrictions on December 1st, and so indoor dining can go back to the way it was, then how would we feel about the fact that we've spent, you know, $170,000 for businesses for four weeks of some restrictions around indoor dining, when actually the last, it wouldn't be four entire weeks because we've had some good weather these last, you know, 10 days or whatever? And so I think my only question is, a little bit to the group is, you know, what's the rush to approve this right now? And obviously, like I said, I think we want to support the businesses, I just wonder if we should pause a little bit and just see, since things are happening so quickly, pause a little bit, nothing's going, this is not really, the funds won't come out until the, until December anyways, to see what the next two weeks bring. That is my only comment.
Thoughts from anyone?
I guess I would add that I, I tend to concur with Kath, excuse me, trustee Dodd. This, this seems to have a, I don't know, a rushed feeling about it. And I, and I too would like to see how, really how the next several weeks play out, both with the restaurant business and the state of our local health. And I, I think that there's really no, no real harm in waiting a brief period of time to be sure that we're really spending, what, a hundred plus thousand dollars in a, in a way that's really needed. So I, I favor.
One thing I'd point out, we are waiting until November 25th. Nothing happens until November 25th, that's two weeks from now, because that's what we've stipulated, that you have to go at least four weeks. So the question is then, when's the next board meeting?
It's November 24th.
24th. So I guess maybe, maybe the suggestion is that, so no money's going to be expended before the next board meeting. And if people have concerns, we can, you know, address the staff and we can put it on the agenda to revisit it. But no, no money's being spent before the next board meeting, and you figure the process, I don't know, how long did it take for people to sort of figure out how to apply and apply and get the money? Is that a couple of weeks or was it pretty quick?
Last time around, we had applications within the first week, so I believe we posted on Friday and we had applications by the middle of the following week. And they're fairly familiar with the process, so it would be a similar time.
Okay, so it would be pretty quick. You know, I mean, I, my only concern is our last meeting of the year is December 12th, or December 10th, whatever it is, December 12th, I think, right? No, December 8th. So, and then our next meeting is in January, so we have to make up our mind by then.
And I, and I guess my, my, my sense is that I would rather be making up my mind a little bit later than, than now.
Obviously mine as well, but I'm, but I hope.
I, I mean, I'd be supportive of two weeks, but I don't think, I don't think we're suspended December 8th.
It do have a question, there's a lot of.
Let me mute everyone.
Sorry, I only have one device on.
All right, trustee Plunkett, I've muted everyone, you can go unmute and fire it off.
Sure, and obviously, we don't know how long this is going to last, and we don't want it to last that long. Is there, you know, I don't know about the thought, I mean, I want to get money in the hands of restaurants, you know, I would feel horrible if, you know, something happened and we didn't at least try to do this. Is there a possibility of, you know, they, they have an application, let's say they're due, you know, the average, like $3,000, it's $1,500, you know, immediately and $1,500 a month later, assuming this is still, assuming this order hasn't changed. It's just, I'm just floating an idea there, I don't know that that's, you know.
Actually, I think, I think that's a pretty good idea, trustee Plunkett. Look, we're back to, again, no, no funds were planned to be expended prior to the 25th of November. And there is a board meeting intervening between there, a, a busy board meeting, you know, a, a number of items, including a potential executive session as well. And we could certainly make it, trustee Plunkett, that, you know, something like half the money would go out in an initial application, and if we were still, I mean, again, this isn't that much, this isn't life-saving money, this is trying to create a bridge to other governmental programs, but we could certainly say that, you know, half the money goes out now and half the money goes out, you know, four weeks later, assuming we don't have, or two weeks later or whatever, assuming we don't have any change in circumstances. I will say to the trustees, I'm more worried about us not getting better, but getting worse, and having additional restrictions put on us.
If we look graph, our cases are.
We are worse than we were March and April, Governor Pritzker, stay at home, a lot worse.
And I don't know if I necessarily disagree with that, President Polinsky, but that, but we might then need to look at if we want to do something for the service industry. So it's more just, you know, things, it is more just pausing, making sure we understand what is, you know, see what happens in the next two weeks, we're not going to be paying out the money. So I would be in favor of just making our final decision on the 24th. And I don't think that will be a long discussion, because today we were talking a little bit about the rules and the things like that, but.
We never do short discussions, Scotty. Okay?
Well, we want to make sure we make the right decision.
I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to making the right decision, of course, that's the intention. My thought is, if a trustee has a concern over the next two weeks, to raise it with the staff and we'll put it on the agenda, if the staff doesn't hear from a trustee, you know, prior to our next meet, we'll go with what proved in the, in the, remember, this, the staff, this is a collaborative process and it's a process with staff, so it's not like they're going to do something that we're not on.
So I have a question of trustees Dodd and Barrow, are you prognosticating that the mitigation efforts will be discontinued? And therefore, these efforts are potentially superfluous? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand where you're coming from with this.
No, no, I, I, I'm certainly not. President Polinsky probably got it right in suggesting that we're heading towards worse rather than better. I just want to move slowly about, about a further expenditure of these retail support funds. I, I, I understand the importance and the value that our restaurants have, but I just want to, I, I, number one, would like to see the more refined numbers reflecting both Sophia and Carlos and Carlos. I think that we're making a, a decision, we're being asked to make a decision now with incomplete and perhaps significant information that we don't have in front of us.
Well, we'll have to wait until they apply for that to some extent, which is weeks after we're going to say it's okay. So, I mean, again, in the, in the scheme of things, trustee Barrow, I mean, the biggest number on here is, is Pescadero and Convito at 16 and 14. It's highly unlikely, and again, as, as Mr. Berman said, if there's a number that's eye-popping, they'll bring it to us before anything happens, but their expectation is that it won't be, and I understand that. I mean, there's a level of, when we set this program in place, we, we said we would look at the numbers post, because it's just, it's, we were trying to get the money to people. This money's been allocated, we've all sort of written it off, we definitely have to be responsible with, with our funds, but this is a good use. And again, we're not putting anything out until after our next meeting, so how about we leave it at, if anybody wants to talk about this at the next meeting, if they're concerned about it going out, they contact Mr. Berman and it'll be on the agenda, but if nobody's concerned come two weeks from now, because it's not getting better, and there's, there's really no chance of it getting better before the end of the year, then we'll proceed as planned with option one. Is that acceptable to people? Again, we make the call, this is our call, the boards as a whole.
Will we, my only concern on that, does that put?
Wait, 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 hang on, trustee Sullivan, go ahead, and then trustee Barrow.
Does that put Mr. Berman and staff at a slight disadvantage of sort of an uncertainty when, when and if restaurants or anybody calls and says, are we going to do this? Are they responding, I don't know? Or are they saying? Or are they saying yes? Because again, I, I think, you know, it's important for us as a village. We were, in my opinion, I'm supportive of it because this was a subset of a dollar amount we, we approved six months ago to support this. I understand that two restaurants have done well, but I would argue that, you know, none of these restaurants have done as well as they should have, even despite the good weather and the extended warm weather. I think their, their numbers are still down and they're not operating. So I think it's important, given the dollar amount that we were comfortable with six months ago and we continue to do very well on a budget, we're allowing staff to say, we have 170,000 to support these businesses today versus let's wait and see. This is not additional dollars that we're taking from what we approved six months ago. And I think we're in, you know, the village has managed through in a better position through this crisis. And it's going to get real tough on these guys, starting right now with the weather that moved in. You know, they're not going, I'm sure there's a little bit of concern out, more concern out there today than there was 48 hours ago when it was, they could fill out their outdoor seating. So I, I agree actually a little bit of, at least with trustee Plunkett and trustee Kennedy to say, you know, we, I think it's important that our staff has some definitive answers today or tomorrow when they get a field phone call versus our village board has decided to wait and see.
So I wanted to respond to, um, trustee Kursman's question, um, which we asked, you know, what is kind of driving some of this? So in addition to what trustee Barrow said, I, I just, I believe there is some uncertainty here. Um, and yes, I actually think that we are not headed in the right direction. But I also believe that our governor has gotten a lot of heat for what he's done. Um, and so I'm, I'm not sure what's going to happen in the next three to four weeks. Um, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would be surprised if he changed some things, but you just, I just don't know. And so to answer your question, um, that's why I feel like more information is always helpful. Um, and as, 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 um, the question that, um, trustee Sullivan was asking is, I think if, uh, if a restaurant was asking, um, our staff, I think this, the, um, the staff would have to respond, what I'm proposing is that a final decision will be made at the board meeting on the 24th. Um, that's how I would, you know, because that's when, that's when, and that doesn't impact the restaurants because we weren't expending money yet to them. So, um, and we, the staff has did, did an incredible job, um, getting the grants turned around relatively quickly. Um, and so I don't, um, I don't foresee that as an issue here. Um, and so for those of us who have some questions, that, you know, so that's my, that's what I'm proposing. So we don't, I don't believe we have to have, I don't believe we have to have consensus here. So I'm just stating my opinion.
Yeah, well, look, I, I would like, I would like at least the majority of the board to agree on which direction we're headed here. Um, so first off, let's, let's just talk about options. Um, is, is everybody comfortable, ignoring the timing for one moment, is everybody comfortable with the concept of option one, which would be to extend basically the same amount to the restaurants that, that qualify in that at an estimated amount of about $170,000? Is option one the direction that people are comfortable with? I got a nod from trustee Barrow, a nod from trustee Dodd. Trustee Sullivan? That's a nod. Trustee Plunkett and trustee Kursman, you're not on video, so you'll have to pipe up.
Yes.
Joel, you're still on mute, I think. I didn't do it.
Didn't do it. I won't be silenced. Hey, so there's no video of me either?
No, it's just.
Oh, well, I, I better get casual here. I'm going to take off the coat. Um, yeah, I, I have, I, I think I have, I, I can see myself. So, but yes, I'm, I'm supportive of option one.
I, can you see him? I actually am seeing his picture, not him.
No, Joel, I can see you, so don't, don't. Did I dress?
I can see you too.
Okay, good.
All right, so trustee Kennedy, I haven't heard from you. Are option one sound okay to you?
Absolutely. And, and, um, in terms of the question of delay, I, I would feel strongly we should go full steam as proposed. I don't see it getting better.
Okay. I can see you now, trustee Kursman, so I don't know what was going on there, so. Um, all right, so trustee Kennedy said she thinks we should, uh, move forward. Trustee Sullivan?
I am in agreement. I'm in agreement.
Okay, so trustee Plunkett, trustee Kursman.
I'm comfortable with proceeding now. But, you know, I, it's not with the strength of conviction. I, if, if the group, you know, I'm willing to go with trustee Dodd, um, if, if others are there. But my, my starting place, I really just think, let's do this. We kind of know how things are going. We know where, where it's going. We, we've been through this sort of once before. This is 2.0. This isn't new policy for us. So that's, that's sort of where I'm at, but I guess it's not with the super strength of conviction.
Trustee Plunkett, thoughts?
You know, it wasn't going great for this, this order.
Joel, Joel, prime mute. All right, trustee Plunkett?
Sure. I mean, it's not like restaurants ever got back to where they should have been. So, I mean, I, I do think that, you know, they, they've been behind since this started, um, for the most part. Um, so, you know, I don't know that, that two weeks is, is a big difference. I don't think we'll know anything in two weeks. Um, I think, you know, I, I do agree with trustee Dodd. I, I believe the governor has taken a lot of heat for this, but, um, I, you know, we, we, I don't know, we earmarked this money for restaurants in the first place and the restaurants have not been in a position where they could ever operate at 100% since this started. So, um, I think this, you know, I think this is a good thing to do for them, um, whether now or in two weeks, but I think a signal to the restaurants that we are with you, um, is important.
Well, I think the other thing that even if Governor Pritzker says indoor dining's okay, with the case numbers up, I think indoor dining is going to be far, far more sparsely populated than even the 25% or 50% capacity, whatever the rule is, um, in terms of, if Governor Pritzker backs up and says, no, you can do indoor dining, I don't think the restaurants are all of a sudden going to be okay, if you will. You know, they're not going to be okay regardless, given where the cases are. So.
And we should also keep in mind that the promise that those tents held out at one point has pretty much evaporated, um, because they, they can't do the, the closed sided tents, which many of them I think invested some hope in, um, and that's not a possibility anymore. So I, I, I really think that they're looking at a pretty bleak couple of months at least, maybe more.
So trustee Dodd, trustee Barrow, it sounds like a majority would prefer to just move forward and communicate this.
Yeah, I'm, let's, we understand your concerns. Let me, let me add to, a little bit to that, that, uh, listening to you all, while there is certainly a, a part of me that, that really would like to move slowly and carefully here and not commit additional funds. We are talking, number one, about a relatively short period of delay. And I do think, looking into the future, uh, that we know what the future's going to look like. There's not going to be a miracle change of the curve between now and the next, uh, two weeks or so. Uh, in fact, I think we all expect that, that things will become, become more serious uh, and that we will be having this very same conversation, albeit much shorter, uh, in, uh, in two weeks or so. So while I do have, while, while I do have some concern about moving forward, I also appreciate that, uh, uh, these folks need our help now and I think are going to need our help even more so. So, uh, with some reluctance, uh, I'll get on board with doing this now. Uh, I think that we should, we should do, do all that we can. And, uh, this is but a, a small token of, of our help for them. So count me among the majority, please.
Trustee Dodd? Sounds like we're going to push forward here. All right. So, um, Mr. Hallgren, Mr. Berman, you guys have what you need? It sounds like we're comfortable moving forward. Again, no funds are going out until the next board meeting. So, you know, certainly, um, a, a COVID update can be on the village manager's report. Um, and, uh, you know, if there's big concerns, there's nothing that we have done that we can undo, but I can't undo, but I do think to trustee Sullivan's point, I think it was, and trustee Kennedy's point, you know, and actually I think trustee Plunkett and trustee Kursman as well, just like communicating, knowing, the restaurants knowing we're still supporting them, um, is important and the money can't go out the door yet, but people can be ready to, to jump in.
Yes, we have the direction. I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I would just add, uh, let's get the ball rolling. Uh, and I guess probably stop talking about it and get the ball rolling.
All right, we have the direction we need and the disaster declaration is on every agenda. Um, so if something unforeseen happens and, and it would change the dynamic, we can always pull that off the consent agenda and discuss it. Um, so there, there is that flexibility too. So we'll get this moving forward. We'll finalize the rules. We'll try to clarify, you know, what, where the new restaurants are at and, and get this implemented.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Hallgren. So where are we? We're back to trustee Dodd. I believe that was your only item, trustee Dodd?
That's correct. Yep.
Item 6.4 is municipal services committee. That's trustee Sullivan.
Uh, both items were approved on consent.
Public safety is trustee Kursman.
All items on consent.
Uh, 6.6 is judiciary committee, trustee Plunkett.
All items on consent.
Item 6.7 is reports from our special committees. There are no reports. Uh, item seven is new business. Uh, there's no additional new business to discuss. So item eight is adjournment. Uh, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
That was trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Kennedy, beat you there, trustee Dodd by a little bit. Uh, I will ask the clerk to please call the role on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye, aye.
Trustee Kursman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
And President Polinski.
Aye, so the motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.